Yeah.
Counselors, please take your seats. I now call this meeting of the Cranston City Council to order. At this time, I would like everybody to please turn off their cell phones. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Here.
Here.
Here. Present.
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 Present. Is there a motion dispensed or reading of the minutes of the last meeting?
Second.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, our God, indivisible, liberating, just as for all.
Are there any public acknowledgements or commendations?
I have none.
Public hearings, we have a matter listed on the miscellaneous business which is a request from the state to perform construction at the Pastore Center related to stormwater repairs. Anybody from the state DOT representatives here this evening? Please come forward.
Evening.
Evening.
I am with the State Department of Administration, Division of Facilities Management, Dane Kwitkowski. Basically, we are requesting permit to perform work within the 25-foot buffer of the adjacent cemetery in order to make repairs to the DOT railroad bed right away. These repairs are due to stormwater erosion and continued flooding in that area. And what we would like to do is put the area back together, put the cemetery section that has been eroded back in its original condition prior to the washout, and make future repairs to prevent this from happening in the future.
Any questions from any members of the council? Lynn Ferny, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I just want to add to Dane's presentation. I think you all have copies of photographs that I had made, just to give you a little bit more information on what is actually happening out there. You can see on photo number one in the corner that grave number 939 is right next to the ditch where it has eroded, and it has eroded about 10 feet. You can see where the railroad bed on photo number two, where it used to be, and the intent is to fill in that area so that it would prevent any future erosion. You can see in photo three, grave number 939 is the same as in photo one, but the headstone that was next to this one, one row over, is now in the ditch. And there's another one down in there as well. It doesn't show in this particular photograph. But the intent, of course, is to stop this from happening and to fill the area next to the cemetery, replace the headstones where they were. Unfortunately, any bones that were there, any remains, have washed out and are probably in the bay by now. But the headstones will be replaced in the location where they were, and they have historic photographs that do show where those are. Photos number four does show an area that was repaired back in 2007 when the original washout happened in 2006. And that didn't last, as you can see, so they're taking a more thorough method in preventing this from happening, as well as putting in a new culvert to take the extra runoff that the historic culvert that is there now can't handle. We have the rains that we've had, especially in the past couple of years. This is the result of that, when the culvert overflows and there's no way for the water to go. So this will fix that, and I'm here for questions.
Prevent it from happening in the future. So the plans that you have, that you've been giving copies of, explain the existing conditions, that we've done a thorough topographical survey, as well as marking wetland edge, taking into account the environmental aspect of it. And there's a proposed plan as to the repairs, which is C4 in your plan sets, which explain what we're doing in the interim immediately to prevent this from happening in the future and losing any more erosion in the cemetery area, as well as, in the future, providing a culvert to better manage the stormwater in this area and prevent this from happening in the long term.
Counselor Nacito?
Thank you, Mr. President. So along with the curl, the culverts that you're making bigger, is there any other drainage that you're going to do there so it doesn't happen again? Or I'm kind of not afraid, but, you know, you're going to fill one spot, obviously we know where the water level is, that that water's not going to go someplace else and create a problem someplace else.
Yes, so we're in the process of doing a thorough evaluation of the stormwater flows and the impact downstream. In the permanent repair, which is, in fact, the culvert, to deal with the stormwater management aspect, it will evaluate the impact on the pituxid, you know, going further downstream. Luckily, the proximity that we are, this project location, is to the river, it does not negatively impact, and we will make sure that the culvert does not negatively impact the wetland area, you know, immediately downstream.
So you currently don't have the final fluid numbers or final plan, do you? Or is this it?
What you have there is the immediate temporary repairs, which we're proposing to remediate not only the railroad bed, but also to keep this from happening and losing any more of that cemetery area.
Okay, but do you have the final engineering studies with the water runoff, so we know what the numbers are and things like that?
Right now, we're still in that evaluation process, so we're determining, you know, the size of the culvert, the inverts, and the exact location, so that's forthcoming.
So you come in front of this council once you have the final plans?
Yes, yeah, there'll be a second permit request requesting those permanent culvert installations.
And if you can indulge me for one more question, Mr. Council President, are you working with, I know you're working within planning, but are you working with our Public Works Department too, or this is just going to be done on your own and there's no coordination with our?
There's coordination with the State Historical Preservation Society, the DOT Historical Preservation Society, and as well as DOT Property Management, because it is their property. We've been coordinating with land.
Planning?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from members of the council? Hearing none. Any additional comments?
Yes, just one other comment. If the council does vote to grant a permit for the work that will be done within 25 feet of the cemetery, which is why we're here, that's required of the council. The plan or the permit that would be written up by city clerks, that is the type of permit we've received in the past for this kind of work, that planning be able to review and offer comments. One specific comment that I would like to have added or a condition in the permit would be that any exposed roots that are in the proximity or next to cemetery be removed by hand, either by cutting with a chainsaw or clippers or whatever, and not pulled out with a bulldozer, just to eliminate any possibility of any more graves being pulled out by the ground disturbance.
Sounds like a very fair request, to be honest with you. Any additional questions from any other council? Councilman Botts and Councilman Stychos.
Thank you, Council President. Do we have an idea of how many graves there are at this site?
There are approximately 1,000.
And this is all on state property?
This is state property.
Is it common practice to allow a cemetery like this to be overgrown like that? I mean, I know, obviously, there's washout, but also looking at these pictures, I mean, it looks like it's just in the middle of a woods and nothing's being done. Is that, I don't know if this is your area or not, but I mean, is that common practice to let this go like that?
I'm not sure that it's common practice. Unfortunately, it's not under our jurisdiction per se, you know, to maintain that. But it is basically, the location of where the cemetery is, is deep in the woods.
So there's potential, if this isn't done, there's potential for more graves to be affected by this?
Yeah, and I think that's what I'd like everyone to keep in mind, is that the overall end goal here is to protect the cemetery, protect the property, and to not lose any more, you know, not lose any more graves.
Thank you.
Protect those, out of respect.
Counselman Stychos?
Lynn, do we need to make an amendment tonight to include the thing you had about hand tools on roots?
No, because the permit hasn't been written yet. So certainly you could make it a condition that the planning department include any conditions, any future conditions that we would deem necessary for this. But right now, the only thing I can see is the removal of the root so it doesn't disturb the existing cemetery that's abutting it.
Okay, so you're saying we don't have to do anything tonight, planning will take care of the condition?
Yes, we've done it last, that way as well, last night, sure.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to add to Lynn's comments that, you know, I had met with Lynn and the folks from historical out there and listened to everyone's concerns as to their respective requests, so, you know, we're incorporating Lynn's concern about the roots and vegetation as part of the bid documents and scope, so that's, to answer your question, it's being rolled into the scope of work.
Counselman Nacito?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Council President. Just a quick question through the chair. How soon will we be getting started, and is there a deadline, or are there critical times here? I mean, I know the summer's almost over, so are you going to try to do this, you know, before November or frost, or?
Basically, the end, we're looking to do this as soon as possible. You know, before the?
What a completion date of?
Upcoming rains.
So when do you anticipate your completion date?
As soon as we receive approval. It's approximately a four-week duration schedule.
So it's about a four-week project?
Four-week project.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions? Hearing none. Thank you for your comments. I look forward to the request.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public who would like to speak on any docketed items? Mr. Lawrence? Please come forward.
Mr. Lawrence, 745 Native Avenue, Cranston, Rhode Island. What I'm here tonight is to ask that the city council, in its inexistence now, to put an ordinance in giving all the people with that pipeline easement a tax exemption on the pipeline area. One, these people, the pipeline, and on these people's property, that property is being used as a convenience for a public service to every person in the state of Rhode Island. I believe they deserve a break. As far as I know, there is no insurance on these easements for them from the homeowners. I wrote to the people who make the contracts for the exemptions and like that for the homeowners, and they gave me a one-line saying, "We do not even address the issue." And I have the paper over there if you want to see it. I believe they deserve now, with the safety of this pipeline becoming more and more, because this pipe is already getting older, and it was never put in right, put in on solid ledge and stones buried on it, and pieces of steel buried right over it. I believe they deserve a break, and they should get a tax exemption. And anyone within like a 200-foot buffer zone should have a tax break on, I don't care if it's $1,000, $2,000, whatever you would come up with. Because they're using this, their property, for their sole purpose, okay? They can't build on it, they can't do nothing but walk on it. The land, the value of the land is next to nil, and Tennessee Gas is getting all this benefit of that pipeline being there. And these pipelines, they're, in some sections, there's 750 PSI's, and it may even be more now. That was when it was put in.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Anybody else like to speak on any?
I would like to work with my councilman, Mr. Nacito, on any items.
Anybody else speak on any docketed item? Ms. Akosha?
I know, I'm probably getting to be a pain in the neck up here. The name's James Akosha, address is 76 Midvale Avenue, Cranston, Rhode Island. And I'm here to talk about 81 Midvale Avenue. I've spoken, matter of fact, unfortunately, the gentleman that was just up here talking about the cemetery, maybe somebody should talk to him about the problem that we have over at 81 Midvale. I have spoken with Channel 12, one of Susan Hogan's people. She's called up to City Hall three times, requesting a call back. Nothing happened. Today, lo and behold, she called up on a day of a city council meeting, and she's got to spoke to, speak to someone. That someone, I don't know who it was, but they says, "We're aware of it, and we're working on it." Well, I'm not sure what you're working on, and I'm not sure how you secure a condemned building with two pieces of plastic tape. And I'm under the impression that if a building is condemned, the windows and doors should be boarded up. I spoke with the fire department Friday, and they says that they were going to talk to the building inspector and advise them that they received an anonymous call about 81 Midvale Avenue. I told them, "You don't have to be, make it anonymous. They know me, they probably hate me." But from there, I went to DEM, spoke to someone from DEM, they says they couldn't do anything, and he advised me to talk to someone from the Attorney General's office. Spoke to someone from the Attorney General's office. He says, "They don't usually do that, but one thing to do is make it more expensive to deal with me and the neighbors in the neighborhood than to rip that house down." Now, I'm going to be here. I'm not going to go away. Some of you people in November, maybe gone, you know, the administration, we know, is not going to be here, so they don't give a damn. But we're talking about lives. We're talking about kids running around there. And, you know, I just can't imagine, can't fathom, that the administration would call that 81 Midvale Avenue secure. And if anybody wants to dispute me on it, I'm a 68-year-old man, and I can walk back and forth in there with just about bending down. And if that's secure, let me know. And by the way, from the last time I was up here, I believe it was two weeks ago, at the Safety Services Committee. I go over there once a week. I come back from my summer cottage so I could cut the grass in my yard, and I go over there with a measuring tape. It sunk an inch and a half in two weeks. Now, what are we going to do? Wait for the whole thing to go down? Because if it goes down, half of Midvale Avenue is going to go down, half of the persons on the side of them is going to go down. I don't know what it looks like with the people behind them. Half of my house or my driveway is going to go down. And everybody I talk to, everybody, they should have been born as an octopus, so they can point in eight different directions. Not me, it's them. Let's get something straight. This is going to happen. Not if, but it is going to happen. Yes, sir.
Council President?
Thank you for recognizing the councilman. I think it's my job. Councilman?
Council President, I was wondering if we could have the solicitor answer if he has any updates now instead of?
We need a legal opinion on this to start with. So, Mr. Christian Baum?
Yeah. Mrs. Akosha, as you were here the last time, you were here just, I think it was on July 29th, the last time you were here, and the council president directed me to see what I could do about the problem on that street. The following day, a letter was sent out to the building owners named Timothy J. Alviti and Melissa A. Alviti. It was pursuant to the general laws entitled Notice of Unsafe Conditions, and it was a demolition order. So they were given a demolition order due to unsafe conditions, structural weaknesses on the property, and we did copy by certified mail Rhode Island Housing and Mortgage Finance Corporation, who was a lien holder on the property. The letter went out, as I said, right after we had discussed this the last time, on July 30th, so the 30 days has not expired yet. But I'm sorry you had to call all these people and not me, but that's exactly what has been happening since the last time we spoke.
Well, if it was me, and if I own the house, and I know damn well that I'm not going to be able to move back into it, because this is the second time, not the first time, this is the second time that that foundation caved in. The first people let the bank take it. Then supposedly, it was all straightened out, the building inspection department gave them the okay, and these kids, and they're kids, they're nice kids, spent over $100,000 to try to remedy the situation, and all of a sudden, it drops again a foot and a half, and I get something from the city to tell me to rip the house down? And I have to be careful with what I say. I got to bite my tongue, but, you know, I tell you.
I mean, you may be?
It's there, rip it down. But what I'm going to do is I'm going to get a petition, and I'm going to go around the neighborhood and going to have everybody come into the assessor's office for an abatement on their property. And damn it to hell, it's going to cost more for the abatements on that property than it would if that house got ripped down.
Well, what I'm telling you now is that a procedure has been put in place.
But this is going to have to re-?
So the city can do this. I was asked to do this last month. I believe I shared with some of the council people your frustration and a directive which left little room for wiggle room about what my feelings were on this issue. They investigated it. They sent out the letter to demolish the property the next day. Following that, as I said, this is a procedure. We just can't go knocking down houses of people who are upset about the condition of houses in the city, although, you know.
Well, if you have an emergency situation for life and limb.
Well, the gases shut off, the electric has shut off, the houses?
And what type of gas is being exuded from that house? There was, when that house went down, and it's September 1st last year, I know it because I was having a damn party for my wife and it's?
Excuse me, Ms. Akosha. This is a give-and-take type situation, so you've been around long enough, so you understand that.
I apologize.
All right. Mr. Christian Baum, you want to finish your comment, or you're all?
No, I mean, I can understand the frustration, but it is a procedure and a process, and from what I can tell, it's being followed according to state law.
All right. Councilman?
I appreciate? Council President, could I just ask a procedural question and then another question? My first question is, have they answered this yet, counsel?
Not to my knowledge.
Second, procedurally, what happens if they don't? Where do we go from here?
I believe, I'm not entirely sure on where we go from here. I think that there is a list of vendors who we can call to get this done. I don't know.
Would have to be bid out by, through BOCAP?
I think there's already a list of them, of people. There's a list of people.
So we'll know after the 30th where we're going from here?
Because when I looked into this, what I wanted to make sure is if there was a BOCAP bid that had to go out, that we got that out simultaneously, so there wouldn't be another delay with the neighborhood. So apparently, there is a list of pre-qualified people who can do the service. It's not a particular item, so it doesn't need to be bid out.
Council President, we're not having a September Safety Services meeting. Can we put this on Public Works agenda?
Certainly.
Council Chairman, is that okay?
All right, so we'll have some additional information at this next meeting.
On the 11th, I think it is, right?
Through the chair?
Yeah.
The Public Works meeting in September is being continued to October, to the best of my knowledge.
Well, we could put it on, we can all continue.
All right, all right, thank you. On September 11th? So you want to reschedule it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so.
Mr. President, I do apologize if I was out of order, Mr. Christian Baum, I also. But you have to realize, come this Saturday, it's a year.
Jim, everybody in this council understands your frustration. And the administration does, too. Getting things done is a slow process. We can't act without following procedures, and Mr. Christian Baum has set the procedural matter so that we have to go along with what he says on this. But I think we're going to see a resolution on this very shortly.
I hope so. Through the chair, if I may, to the building inspector, did you receive the order from the fire department to board up the windows and doors of the house? I was told Friday, I spoke to a fire official, and he says he was putting in a request.
Well, first of all, sir, the building inspector is not here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And second of all, I'm leery about trapping methane gas, as you allege, in a house with no ventilation, so I'd have to talk to him about that as well.
Okay. Gentlemen, ladies, I thank you for listening to me again. I know I'm a pain in the neck, but I'm a Sicilian, so, you know, maybe not today, maybe not tomorrow. But, you know, I see a Channel 10 microphone here. If they'd like to take a ride by the house and take a picture of it, they more in hell can. And it's 81 Midvale Avenue in Cranston, right off Butler Long Road.
He's sitting right on the left.
And you can see whether that house is secured or not. And gentlemen and ladies, I thank you very much for indulging my personality. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Council Vice President Farina?
Yes, Council President.
Do you have a?
I do. I'd like to make a motion to approve the state's permit request and to provide for planning's review and recommendation, and require that any exposed roots next to the cemetery or headstones be removed by hand.
Second, motion made in second. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Barry McCall?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Anybody else like to speak on any docketed items? All right, seeing no hands?
We got one.
Mr. President, is this open or on the agenda?
On the agenda.
On the agenda, okay. I want to talk a little bit about what the council members communication?
I wanna talk a little bit about what the council members' communications are going to be. A lot of it has to do with dollars, of course, such as the Antonucci case, on the legal fees from certain attorneys, and on and on it goes. And why I wanna bring it up on this basis is, it was just reported that we were gonna have a surplus, a rather substantial surplus, but by far the majority, that comes out of the school department's budget. Now, it's pretty understanding, or if you really look at this, it's gonna be understanding that we're gonna run into probably this year a million dollars in legal fees, and that doesn't add anything for any settlements. It's hard to believe that all these legal cases are gonna end up in Cranston's favor. There was an article in the paper just recently, and on the captain's, where he wanted $250,000 in legal fees, now, since he got nowhere with that, he's suing the city. I don't quite understand what's going on, when we allow these cases to go as long as they had, and remember now, his case, Captain Barry from the state police threw it out. Captain Barry didn't say that you already spent enough time collecting your pay, of course, and therefore I'm gonna exonerate you. He exonerated him, period. So what's the city's defense gonna be? I just bring this up because, you know, it's an election year for sure, and these legal fees, the council, of course, is gonna have to face this, and I know you're trying now, I know you've had some special meetings just with the council and the administration, but the sad truth is, it's doing nothing at the moment to satisfy where we are, and it hasn't satisfied us with the former chief, it hasn't satisfied, that is, the city in any one of these cases, unless I'm missing something. So we better be prepared, we may brag about no taxes, and we may brag about we got a surplus, but also remember that's coming from, the majority of it, from the school committee, and I don't know what's gonna happen there next year, particularly if they're allowed, I don't know if they're gonna be allowed to carry that over, or what's gonna happen, but my concern is simply one of dollars and cents. Everybody here has a responsibility for it, and I don't see, really, where it's gonna, I don't see any rosy outcome. If anybody can see a rosy outcome on the suits against the city, the money we've already spent, and the money we're gonna have to, on the captain's case alone, since he's suing the city now, they've got to, they've got to allow for more money for lawyers. So I hope everybody's looking at that seriously, and as I see it, I'm afraid we're looking at a taxes increase as a result. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public like to speak on any docketed items? All right, seeing nobody coming forward, I close that portion of this meeting. Are there any docketed resolutions this evening?
There are none.
None? Safety Service and License Committee, council chair, Richard Santa Maria.
Thank you, council president. We have a Class B vicu- individual liquor license, new number 80 above the cap, at the Blend Cafe, 745 Reservoir Avenue. The committee has met and recommends approval, I move passage.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Counselwoman Lee?
Yes.
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 Counsel Barry, Michael.
Yes.
Counsel Seale?
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Nothing else, council chair? I mean, no, Mr. President.
Uh, ordinance committee, council chair, Arquette.
Thank you, council president. Seven dash fourteen dash two, ordinance and amendment of Title VI, Dakota City of Cranston, 2005, entitled Animals, Roosters. This is informational only, it failed in committee eight, fourteen, 2014, four nays, three ayes.
Okay, it's informational only, so there's no need for a motion. Finance committee, council chairman, Steikos.
Okay, we have a resolution authorizing real estate and tangible tax abatements as recommended by the assessor.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Counselwoman Lee?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Barry, Michael.
Yes.
Counsel Seale?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Yes. And then we have a resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Counselwoman Lee?
Yes.
Counsel Barry?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
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 Then a waiver of interest on tax payments that have been recommended by the city treasurer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Counselwoman Lee?
Yes.
Counsel Barry?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
And then denial of waiving interest as the denials are recommended by the city treasurer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Counselwoman Lee?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then we have a new, the finance committee unanimously recommends passage of the new contract negotiated by the school committee with the custodians union. The highlights of the contract are a 3% raise in the first year, and then a wage reopener in the second and third year, and elimination of longevity for future employees, and unfreezing the step system so that custodians will move along the steps.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Counselwoman Lee?
Yes.
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 Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Uh, claims committee, chairwoman, Sarah Lee.
This is the report of settled claims for informal purposes only. Dolores Moriano, $50 for property damage, all state insurance for Fatima Muriel, $6,006.20 for vehicle damage. Janice Reinho, $866.96 for vehicle damage. William J. Souza, $300 for vehicle damage. That's it.
Okay, thank you. That's for informational purposes only. Any members of the public like to speak on any undocketed items? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
My name is former Sergeant Lillian Rivera from the Cranston Police Department. President Lanny, fellow council members, and community members, I am former Cranston Police Detective Sergeant Lillian Rivera. Recently, this committee has been making inquiries and gathering information on police matters, actually, police personnel matters. These investigations have cost taxpayers close to $700,000. I am here this evening to remind everyone of past casualties of inequities, which also unnecessarily diverted funds from your constituents. I am one of those casualties, and would like to briefly share my story. On June 10th, 2002, my brother, NYPD detective, a 9/11 first responder and survivor, proudly pinned me with the sergeant's badge. I became the first Hispanic and female police officer in this city's 92-year history to be promoted and make rank. As a Cranston police officer, I had an exemplary career with a bright future, until I became the target of a personal vendetta of harassment spanning several administrations. In 2005, as a result of years of work-related harassment and abuse, and with overwhelming medical evidence, I had no other option but to apply for early retirement from a job I loved and was so dedicated to. Then in 2010, I was unjustly terminated. Colonel McGrath, as early as 2006, initiated an internal-
Excuse me, council president?
Yes.
Kirschenbaum?
Yes.
Can you give me a reason why she shouldn't?
Yeah, I know, I just know a little bit about this, and I just wanna, I just wanna educate both, both-
I'm sorry, no, I wanna hear her first.
I, I just wanna say one thing that I think is very important.
So, sir, on my own volition, I have no representation of-
I just wanna say one thing.
...
I understand that, but this is, you are subject to a release, correct? And if you waive the terms, all I'm saying is this, and then I'll sit down, if you waive the terms of this release, then others who may have information about your particular case are free to come up and say what they want as well.
Sir, I am not waiving anything. I am here to tell the truth.
Then other people, other people who may have different impressions of your case, shouldn't they be free-
President Lanny, may I continue?
Shouldn't they be free to come up and say what they think as well?
So be it. Continue.
Thank you. Colonel McGrath, as early as 2006, initiated an internal affairs investigation into my case, but was ordered to stop by city administrators. I am cer- certain that the outcome of this IA investigation would have produced transparency and accountability. Instead, I stood alone in my fight against insidious relentless attacks to discriminate and retaliate, to stop me from exposing what was morally and ethically wrong. Those responsible fought to make me financially insolvent, to silence the truth and to continue their systemic pattern of abuse. The roots of this abuse of power are deep, and its tentacles reach far beyond the confines of this police department. Those involved in misconduct, lies, corruption, and who also participate in unlawful actions, were assured that they would be protected from any consequences by those who condone their behavior or simply look away. In January of 2011, Mayor Fung, during an interview with Channel 12's Tim White, referred to me as, and I quote, "a problem." He posted on his Facebook page how proud he was to have cleaned up this longstanding mess. Prior to Superior Court Judge William Khan's decision dated December 13th of 2013, if I told anyone my story, no one, and I mean no one, would have believed this to be the truth. I urge this council to read Judge Khan's decision, and specifically refer to page 10 and 13. I am here today to remind this council that they were lied to before and deliberately kept in the dark. Please refer to the minutes of your special city council meeting dated March 27th of 2008. Mayor Fung and his administrators knew the facts and particulars of my case. A great effort ensued in 2009, 2010, to shield high-ranking officers and others from negative fallout, and those who caused me harm were and are being rewarded with enriched pensions for life. Mayor Fung can pretend that he did not know that I was a victim of abuse. If this committee would like evidence and documents to prove otherwise, I can do so. I am grateful to this committee for having the fortitude and strength to finally force Mayor Fung to call the Rhode Island State Police and start an investigation that is now almost into its ninth month. I have total confidence that this professional law enforcement agency has integrity and will continue to work diligently, reviewing and shedding light on years of questionable practices. In conclusion, I applaud this committee for its conviction in pursuing the necessary steps to protect the good men and women of this police department, as well as the Cranston community as a whole. I thank you for your time.
Anybody else in the public like to speak on any undocketed item?
Just for the record, council president, Mayor Fung was not mayor in May of 2008.
Please give your name and address for the record, please.
Robin Shutt, 957 Round Top Road in Harrisville, Rhode Island. I would just like to respond carefully, because as Solicitor Kirschenbaum pointed out, there is a release, though I do believe the fact that former Sergeant Rivera decided to speak regarding specifics of that release, that that release most likely can be discussed. Solicitor Kirschenbaum? Thank you. I wanna clarify for the record, Sergeant Rivera was not terminated. Sergeant Rivera receives a pension, as is public record, that she went for, and after several attempts with the courts, as I understand it, has received, so she certainly was not left without compensation from the taxpayers of Cranston. There were thorough investigations, there were thorough investigations conducted by the city as far back as 2005 regarding her allegations. Those are all on record with the city, all the documentation is available. There was also, as many of you were on the council, in January, January 6th of 2011, an executive session where the terms of that release were discussed. Certainly can't discuss what went on in an executive session, but you all briefed, those of you who were on the council at the time were briefed on it, and we did what we did in the best interest of the city, because, at the time, I was Director of Administration for clarification for the record. Given the amount of taxpayer dollars that we are all responsible to watch, we did what we did, if it was in the best interest of the city, based on a history of allegations, in fact, including a 2005 report that pointed out that initial allegations were unwarranted or unfounded. So if there are any questions that the council has that can be discussed, I'm certainly here to answer questions, as I do have some institutional knowledge on this. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none? Thank you, Mrs. Chapp.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on any undocketed item? You know, seeing no hands, we'll close this section. We'll go on to the election of city officials. Zoning Board of Review, Stephanie Socia is the second alternate. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Counselwoman Lee?
Yes.
Counsel Barry?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
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 Yes. Report of city officers. Are there any reports? Guess not.
I have none.
Executive Communications, report of hiring special counsel, pursuant to Charter Section 15.05, is this, Mr. Cordy?
Thank you, council president. Lieutenant David Records of the Cranston Fire Department is requested to be continued in service. Lieutenant Records has met all the necessary requirements, we urge your approval.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Counselwoman Lee?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Barry?
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Counsel Serry?
Yes.
Yes.
Deputy Chief Terry Brennan, Cranston Fire Department, is requested to be placed on pen- pension effective September 1st, 2014. Deputy Chief Brennan has met all the necessary requirements. We urge your approval.
Council President, Communications. That's me.
We didn't take the vote.
Through the chair, we need to take the roll call.
I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Lee? Yes, Councilwoman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilwoman Botts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perry Barceno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sito?
Yes.
Councilwoman Maria?
Yes.
Councilwoman Larren Vittia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ruffio?
Yes.
Yes. Council President, Communications. I'd like to make a few comments this evening. Number one, I've had complaints on Macklin Street concerning through trucking. Macklin Street is one of those border streets between industrial and residential areas. I've had these complaints since I was first elected as a councilman in 2000. In my tenure on the council, I worked to try to solve that problem and it was passed on to Councilman Santa Maria and he's worked to try to solve that problem. The administration put up a sign saying, "Use Call the Street for all trucks going in that direction." But they never put up signs saying, "No through trucking on Macklin." I'm asking this administration to look into it immediately. 14 years is an awful long time for people to sit in their houses and have trailer trucks go by. This should have been corrected many, many years ago. And I don't blame any particular administration because I've been through four of them. You can share the blame equally. And I can share it with you because I didn't do enough, I guess, to get it done. My second comment. El Tapatio, the grass is waist-high. I called this in three weeks ago. Simple request. The grass is still waist-high. I really expect more from this administration. My third comment, and probably the most important one, is the legal cost of all these police problems to the taxpayers of this city. Last count, it was 650,000 or so, and it keeps on ticking. Mr. Tomlin's hit it right in the head. He's not always right, but occasionally he is. It's gonna exceed $1 million before it's all over with. I just hope we get some positive results out of this money being spent because this is taxpayer money. It's not lottery money, it's taxpayer money. And we have a $500,000 surplus on the city side. A million dollars in a negative figure. I don't know how that affects the surplus since the surplus is not audited as of this point. Now, I don't know if all this money is gonna go into this year's budget or next year's budget, but somebody's gonna pay the piper down the line on this. And I think, as councilpeople, we have to make sure that the taxpayers get fully compensated for spending this kind of money and that whoever the wrongdoers are, if there are any, should be prosecuted. Now we'll move on to council member communications. Councilman Stychos.
Thank you. Wondering if we have any update from the administration on the three remaining trees that the Carpiano Corporation promised to plant but has not yet planted?
What we do have, sir, is a request. I'm assuming you were the source through Parks and Rec that those trees, if they're ever planted, get planted in the new park that was built. And we're certainly in favor of that. However, we've received no communications from Carpiano in regards to the status of those three trees.
Could we send them a letter telling them that's our intention? That that's where we would like them planted?
Well, he will be in here for some approvals to some changes to his land soon. That might be a better time to approach it.
Well, I agree, but I think it would be better to send a letter and then if he doesn't act on the letter, we could bring it up when he comes in as failure to act on the letter.
Okay. Before I agree to that, Councilman, give me an opportunity to research back with the Planning Department to find out how this voluntarily contribution of trees came about. And based on what I find out, that may be a good move, yes, to send a letter.
Okay. There was a letter notifying them of where to plant the nine trees, that locations changed a little bit, but a similar letter has went out in, I believe, December of 2000.
Well, I'm aware of that letter, but what I, maybe I misunderstood your request. If you're requesting we send out a letter directing him that this is where we want the last three trees planted, I can certainly do that, yes.
Yes, that was my request.
Okay, my misunderstanding. We can take care of that, yes.
Good. Thank you.
May I follow up on that?
Oh, certainly. Go right ahead.
Through the chair to Councilman Stychos and the administration, we could use those three trees, say that real fast, at the new Orchard Farms playground. So if it's okay with you, I will lobby the administration to get them planted there. So if that's okay with you, Councilman, so.
I thought that was what we just agreed.
Okay.
Was he with? Yeah.
Okay, so I don't see why we have to do any lobbying.
Good lobbying. Great job, Councilman.
Thanks. So let's go for it.
Councilman Stychos, you have another?
Yeah, I've got another item. Signs on Sharon Street. This is a street that's one-way, but it needs one-way signs, it needs do-not-enter signs. And this was communicated to the administration in June. The signs are not up yet. And I wondered if someone could explain why or when they plan to be put up.
Okay, forgive me for, Mr. Barone is not here tonight and he did give me a list of the things that he's been working on. What street did you say that was again, Councilman?
Sharon.
Sharon.
The girls' lane.
I do recall that request and I did ask that that be looked into. As I recall, I did not get a response back yet, so let me look into that, sir. My apologies.
Do we have any, these are all issues that Mr. Barone was working on, but do we have any update on getting the Fire Department to inspect a new Thai restaurant on Gansett Street? The tree planting program and the agreement, negotiating agreement with the Rhode Island Tree Council, that's number two. And a no-through trucking, which I understand takes 14 years to get going, but on Springwood Any update on any of those?
Yes, sir. Your Springwood no-through trucking signs are up.
Great. The other two, but we don't have anything.
Unfortunately, I don't have that information.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the Springwood sign. Look at that, John.
Occasionally, we get something done. Councilman Sito, Councilman Santa Maria?
Councilman Santa Maria, you can go first if you want.
Okay, Councilman Sito and I were campaigning and we noticed utility patches on Phoenix, which, by the way, was just newly paved. Dove Court and Peppermill Lane had bad pave jobs done. It looks like they have an easement for Providence Water. And we're just wondering what the update is on those two. They just showed up, dug the hole, patched it over and left. So I was just wondering if the administration knew what was going on, mostly with Dove Court and Peppermill Lane. And you already know my feeling on digging up freshly paved roads, so I really would like an answer on Phoenix as well as Councilman Sito.
Ken Mason, Director of Public Works. The Phoenix Avenue at the Hess station, I believe that's what you're calling for?
Yes.
That was a grade-one gas leak that had to be repaired by National Grid immediately. They did put a temporary patch in. The permanent patch will be installed probably in about 60 days. Peppermill Lane and Dove Court were both permits pulled by Providence Water to repair the water main blow-off assemblies. Those repairs, those final repairs will be done by the Highway Department per our agreement with Providence Water.
Councilman Sito?
Yeah, I just want to follow up, Director Mason. The one on Phoenix Avenue, it's like a jump for Evel Knievel. I mean, it's at least three and a half to four inches above grade. So my problem is this, okay, it was an emergency, it had to be done. Who the heck inspected it after it was done to make sure that it didn't become another safety hazard? I mean, it's just, you know, terrible. I mean, you have a brand-new paved road. I understand it's an emergency, but there's like a ramp for a skateboarder to jump up over. I mean, and who from the city approved it to be that high? At least fix it a little bit. I mean, I'm not saying you have to be perfect, but fix it a little bit.
Well-
Who approved it? I mean-
Well, Public Works Department approves the permit and I will talk to National Grid to see if they can do a better temporary patch on it, but I've driven it over several times and I don't get the same perception that you do.
There's other lines drawn on the other side of the road, about 50 feet to the left of that patch. Does that mean they're gonna be digging there also?
Not according to them.
Okay.
The issue at that particular point is Providence Water has a very large main transmission line and National Grid actually crosses over that with one of their transmission lines. And that was the issue.
And if I could just follow up, Mr. President, on Peppermill Lane and Dove Court. The patches there, Mr. Mason, were just, I mean, they were like a pile of mud just hanging out. I mean, I know they were temporary and I know I got the call, went by, when Providence Water said they had that big leak and the neighbors appreciated it because they were afraid one of them was gonna get flooded. But it's just, they're just pretty, pretty terrible. So I'm hoping we, you know, do a really good job there, you know, cut it to spec, fix that patch appropriately. That's all.
It will be done. The procedure that we have with Providence Water calls for them to obviously do their repairs, they pull their permit, and they are responsible for maintaining the temporary patch on that road until, for 60 days, until the Highway Department installs the permanent patch. We have called, especially on Peppermill Lane, we did call Providence Water last week to maintain their temporary patch.
Thank you.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Can I just follow up with Councilman Sito on Phoenix? They're gonna be fixing that intersection near Hess because they took out that island. Are they gonna be doing any more work because they took out that island? Are they gonna be repaving there? Are they going to dig more holes? There were 15 different colors of markings right next to that island, so I'm very cynical that they're not gonna touch it again.
That entire intersection is being reconstructed along with the Elena traffic signal.
Yep.
There's four different projects, Plainfield Pike at Atwood Avenue. Those are all, those projects were all being completed by Deambra and the remainder of Phoenix Avenue that did not get paved is going to be, is part of the state project.
So maybe they can fix that little hump on that National Grid made?
No, we'll make sure they fix that.
Okay.
Councilman Arquette?
Thank you, President Lanny. We're on item two on Communications. We're moving backwards, Councilman Stychos and Arquette. So I'm basically gonna ask to the administration, through the chair, the administrative report on the status and cost of probationary Captain Antonucci's case.
The status is that, it's just that, that it's a case. And the cost so far that I called today on totaled around $40,000.
Thank you.
To date. Obviously, the specifics of the case, you know, we can't get into in public and-
That's fine. Just the money is fine with me. Thank you. Can I continue to the next item?
Yes.
President Lanny, because I did give you a list. I have a few things. Can I share to-
Can I have a question on the-
Okay, sure. We're on that topic.
Well, has a neutral been appointed under the Law Enforcement Officers Bill of Rights?
If you want to give me a list of questions to investigate further, I can get us into an executive session to talk about with the attorney who's handling it. I was away last week. I just, I saw this on the doc. I called today to get the cost for you and that's all I really have.
Isn't there a time limit that the case has to be heard within a certain number of days? 45 days?
14 years. Well, we know, as experience, that timelines don't always hold true. And I don't wanna speculate on what may or may not be happening.
You don't wanna speculate on what?
May or may not be happening, whether someone's appointed, whether or not someone wanted a continuance, whether or not someone was on vacation, I don't know. I can look into it, though.
That would be good. Thank you.
That's not a problem.
Councilman Sito?
Yeah, through the chair to Solicitor Kirshenbaum, is there somebody in the administration who does know?
I'm sure the solicitor is familiar with the case, more the nuts and bolts of it.
I know we don't wanna go into executive session because of-
Right.
-type of matter. I mean, I-
And it's not on the document.
I think some of the questions my colleagues have asked are pretty general and not really specific in nature. And I think, you know, not only do my colleagues on the council deserve an answer, but I mean, I think taxpayers deserve an answer too. I mean, it has been going on. I mean, you know, just simple questions. I really, I'm not an attorney, but I don't see the reason for, you know, not answering some of these questions. I mean, I know you've been away, but maybe somebody from the administration could give us something to do.
Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna send somebody up from the administration to offer legal opinion from the legal department, who doesn't work for the legal department. I see on the agenda tonight, we have the cost, status and cost of the Antonucci case. The status is it's an ongoing case and the cost is around $40,000. That's what I'm prepared to say today. So I think that addresses the agenda item.
Councilman Stychos?
The status is, I would think, a little bit more specific than, it's an ongoing case. I'm interested in when the case is going to start and whether there's a neutral. What is the progress of the case? Is there any progress of the case? Is something holding it up? Because the meter is ticking and we're spending money and that's my reason for my question about the status.
I'm not, I'm not-
It's not just that it's an ongoing case. Of course, it's an ongoing case. Everybody knows that.
I'm not, I don't want you to take my answer to mean that I'm somehow finding fault with your questions because I don't. I think my response was that if you give me a list and I can get them or get the attorney who's handling the case in to give you more particular details on the Officers' Bill of Rights and what that means to the city.
Well, that seems very legalistic. Well, that seems very legalistic.
Well, I am the Solicitor.
Yeah. All right. So I need to send you a written letter with my questions?
Well, I think it fans to everyone. There was no, there was no executive session set forth for tonight on this issue. If you wanted more particular, I certainly would have had the Labor Attorney here as well as, I mean, we were briefed by Colonel O'Donnell last time. I don't know if he would be here next time. I certainly wouldn't want to interfere with any of that.
The question was pretty specific as to the status of the case. Not the details of the case, not, are we going to win? Are we going to lose? You know, what's going to happen? It was the status. And I'm, you know, I think it's great you're on vacation. And I don't think it's just your responsibility. As you said, there's a Solicitor. We have Assistant City Solicitors. It's placed on the agenda. Notice to the administration. It's on the docket. You'd think that we, you obviously were able to research the cost, which was good. But the status... I mean, if you called up a fellow attorney and said, oh, what's the status on this case we have? And they said, oh, it's pending. Then you'd say, oh, thanks a lot. I don't think you would. I think you'd ask some other questions to get some more information.
But if somebody said to me, could you give me a list of questions to get back to you? I'd say, yes, thank you.
I see. That's okay.
Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Council President Lenny. I just, through the Chair, to direct to Corte, if I may. Mr. Corte, I, I sent several emails to Mr. Barone. I never got a response. One was on 245 Princess Avenue, in front of the house. The street's eroding. There's a sinkhole. That was about two weeks ago. I never received an email from the administration on the status of that.
No, sir, I don't have it on the list. I will look into it as soon as, as a matter of fact, I won't even wait for Mr. Barone to get back. I'll look into that myself.
245.
245.
Princess Avenue. Next, Mr. Corte, I sent another email to Mr. Barone, which is the administration. Had several complaints about weeds growing along Gansett Avenue and Cranston Street. If you take a ride across from Van, you could see them. School's going to start in a couple of days. It would be nice if we show our junior high school students that cleanliness of our city. So if we can get a crew out there to do some weed whacking along the sidewalks, I'd appreciate it. Next, the fence on Gladstone Street is still damaged. I'd like you to look at that and try to patch up the worst areas of that fence before the elementary school children begin to walk to that elementary school. There's mega holes in that fence. And the fence is rusted and broken. So I wish the administration responds on that. And the last item, about three or four months ago, this council passed a no parking sign ordinance to put no parking signs up on the fence side of Gladstone Street. No signs to the state are not up yet. So those four items, I hope the administration does its due diligence and will address those. Thank you.
Councilman San Maria? Going back to, we're done with utility patches on Phoenix. The rest of my questions, I don't think have to go into executive session, Council President. So I'll just keep going. Maintenance of entrance to Alpine Estates. About 13 years ago, we took the trees out and put some rocks in. Does the city maintain that? Or is that maintained by Alpine?
The city maintains that. And the, and the weeds were taken out last week.
Okay. Do you know what day? Because we went by there the other day. What day was it? Was it towards the end of the week?
Probably Thursday or Friday last week.
Okay. Okay. Thank you on that. The administration report on legal fees, I have that. So I'm going to take that off. The update on 81 Midvale, we had that. So I'm good on that. A constituent on Wine Street called, Ken. This is a new request. I guess with the school opening up, the traffic's been cutting through from Cranston West. Could we send our traffic over there to take a look at it? All the neighbors have a petition, the speeding up and down at opening and closing of school. Wine Street. And Carlos, 74 Warren Avenue. Do we have an update on that? Did Stan get to it?
Council President, as we spoke earlier today, Stan was away last week. So he probably has not had a chance to get through it. But it is on his list to do.
Okay. Also, the school zone signage was put up today. A thanks to the administration on that. Jerry told me that Inspections is checking on the business signs throughout the city. So my thanks on that. Council President asked about Mactlin Street. So if we could get some signage on there, that would be great. That's it for me.
Council Vice President Farina?
Thank you, Council President. I have a constituent who's been calling the city a few times. She's on 894 Oaklawn Ave. Director Barone is working with her. I believe there's a sinkhole on her property. I know it's a state road. I don't know if there's anything the city could do to augment her issue. I know she's relatively disgusted with the city. So if any, you have any update at all? I would appreciate it.
That woman called us during the flood last week. And I had John Corso, who was out there with me responding to something else, stop by and take a look at it. That is a state road. And I believe it's been called in. This, at this point, we're just waiting for the state to do something with it. And it's actually not on her property. The sinkhole is actually a sunken...
Water main.
Drain or of some sort.
Yeah, and I know.
So it's right in front of her prop, in front of her store. But it's not on her property.
I know. The issue I'm running into is that this started on June 23. That's how long ago I requested that they call the state and get somebody out there. So I know it's a state road. I know there's not much the city we can do. I know we've called it in. Is there any way we could escalate this with them?
The state will get to it.
When they get to it?
I'm sorry. I wish I had a better answer for you. But what I will do is, I will call again tomorrow.
Thank you.
But just, you know, I have been in touch with the, with the girl.
Okay.
And, you know, we're just trying to see what we can do with the state.
Thank you, Director.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, President Lenny. I, I just want two general comments. First is, I want to thank Ms. Rivera for coming here and speaking in front of the council this evening. Thank you. You enlightened me a bit. And you're a person of courage. Thank you. Secondly, I'd just like to reiterate what I've been saying for the last several months, where the administration is very non-transparent. When we ask general questions, we do not get answers. The administration stonewalls, delays, hides behind police officers' Bill of Rights, hides behind litigation. We don't get clear, concise answers. And this has been going on since Ticketgate. And I know my colleagues would like answers. I know the people of Cranston would like answers. But for some reason, we have stonewalling. Thank you.
Councilman Asido. Yeah, I do have a docket at items. So, thank you. To the administration, I guess, Director Mason, I know a couple of months back, you and I checked on some of the drainage situations on Wilbur Avenue. But I think enough's enough there now. I would like to give you some time, maybe October. But we got to solve that flooding problem at that Oaklawn Avenue Bridge intersection. Because I mean, there was almost five feet of water there this time in the last storm. I, I know it's costing the city, you know, overtime. We have to have public safety officers there to make sure nobody goes through. It's just a disaster. So can you just maybe enlighten us and give us a plan? I know a few months back, you had said something about an engineering study that had to have been completed and designed. And I know there's a situation with money. But can we, like, come up with a plan where we can find out where we can get some money if we have to go to the state, or the federal government, or somebody? Because one of these days, somebody's going to drown there. And it's not going to happen on my watch. So if you want to call this a crusade, or if the line in the sand has been drawn, this is the situation. I mean, we got to get that fixed. Thank you.
Go ahead. Well, as, as you know, we do have a flooding issue. And it does happen during short but intense rainfall events. It can be as little as an inch an hour, which really is not a lot of rain to make that flood out. And it can happen several times a year. We have done some engineering studies on it. The existing stormwater drainage system consists of a 36-inch reinforced concrete pipe from the Wilbur Avenue, Oaklawn Avenue intersection, to the outfall at the Machanica Brook in back of the Allard Street Sewer Pump Station. This 36-inch pipe is intended to convey all the stormwater flow from the hills east of Oaklawn Avenue. The pipe has been inspected and cleaned by Public Works Highway staff. And it's found to be in very clean and flowing, unobstructed. The catch basins do require cleaning on a frequent basis. But the pipe itself is, is quite clear and, and free-flowing. The outfall pipe at the Brook, however, is a submerged pipe, which does suffer from what's called tailwater conditions when the Brook is, is flowing high, which causes further construction in the drainage network. Back in 2010, when we had the big citywide flooding, Public Works did apply for a FEMA grant to construct an offline storage system to temporarily store stormwater in a parcel, parcel of land located just south of the intersection. The land is owned by the state or an island and would allow the stormwater to more rapidly drain from the intersection during heavy rain events and thus minimize, but not totally alleviate, all flooding from the roadway. This was estimated at $2,400,000 for this project. It would have also required some either land purchasing or an easement from the state for constructing on their land. This project was rejected for funding by FEMA as it didn't not match any of their requirements, including a cost benefit analysis. Public Works has not pursued this project any further since the FEMA rejection. On the flip side, Public Works has gone forward with some additional engineering studies on, to be perfectly honest, what we feel is more, are more important drainage issues. We retained an engineering consulting firm to, to do in-depth studies at four different locations throughout the city. One of them is Zinnia Drive, popular circle issue. The other one is on Garden Street. The other one is Cranston and Wedge Street. And then a fourth one at Lodge and Abbott Street. We do have engineering studies 99% complete. I should have the report by the middle of next month. And I would like to pursue one or more of those projects. But as far as the, the train trestle at Wilbur Avenue, I am not proceeding on that at the moment.
Aren't there any other solutions besides doing a drain under there? I mean, I know the, you guys in Public Works have been keeping those drains. I mean, I'm not making any accusations there. I, I know that, you know, I, I see them do it all the time. Somebody's going to get killed there. You know, and, and it's even less than an inch when it rains. If it rains a half inch for three or four hours in a row, that place gets flooded, too. So there needs to be a solution. I mean, I'm glad you're doing items to help out my other colleagues in other wards. But we got to do something there. You know, whether it's, you know, put in a tank and pumping the water in a tank and then letting it go afterwards. I mean, I'm not an engineer. You are. But I, you know, if you're going to leave the burden on me to come up with solutions, believe me, I will. I have the resources and the people to contact to come up with something. So let's put our heads together and see what we can do there. Because, you know, it's just a nuisance and it's dangerous. And, you know, maybe the state needs to get involved. I don't know if they own Oaklawn Avenue. Because if you look at that during major storms, you have water coming from Glen Hills and those streets there. And it's collecting to the lowest point. And the lowest point happens to be underneath that railroad bridge. So...
Thank you, Council President. I'm, I'm sorry my constituents are raining on your parade on that side of Oaklawn. But I'll try to stop them.
I forgive you.
I have a couple of things, Council President. I just wanted to ask about the tree program. I know we had talked about this some time ago. Something about September, mid-September or something is when the planting takes place. And I was just wondering, through the Chair to the administration, because I'm still trying to get something done in Garden City, in my Garden City project. I was just wondering what the status is. If I, I'm not, I know Mr. Barone isn't here. But I don't know if anyone from the administration is aware of it.
The last communication I had from Mr. Barone before he went out sick is that he was in communication with Rhode Island Tree Council. Whether or not he's heard back from them yet, I don't know. But we did ask him to look into see how many trees we could purchase with the allocated amount of money. We're going to have to wait for Mr. Barone on that.
Okay. Thank you. Second, Mr. Corte, if you want to stay up there through the Chair, I wanted to put on the, on the calendar for the, under Communications for next session, too, that 15 Capuano in Garden City as well, which is a area that, a house that we've been working on. I'd like to find that municipal lien that we put on record. I think Mr. Pykel probably could find it faster than anyone. But because he handled it initially, I had some theories I talked to Mr. Rossin about to try to do something with that property. So if we could maybe track down that lien. And the, third thing is the, I'd like to see, Council President, if we could maybe convene our Transportation Subcommittee, maybe in October or at some point in the future, since we, our grant writer has been working on a grant, a regional grant for New England for the CNG buses. And I know it's, you know, it's a slow time in the summer, but perhaps maybe in the fall. Because I noticed that the school department said they went out and bought some buses, which they had asked us for extra money for. So I don't know where the money was coming from. But I'd like to reconvene that if necessary.
Could I second that recommendation, Council President?
I'll call a transportation meeting in October.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. One, one other comment, and I'll, I'll be done. I've said it time and time again, I've, my colleagues are frustrated by the lack of transparency caused by the Law Enforcement Officers' Bill of Rights. I've said it all, all along, we need to get something up to the legislature. Perhaps we should be sending a resolution up to the legislature to ask them to make some changes in that law. Because we're bound by that law, whether we like it or not. And we have to follow the state law. So if you want to know everything about a case, that's fine. But maybe you have to ask colleagues at the legislature to change the laws.
Councilman Fox?
Thank you, Council President. Through the Chair, the administration. I just have a few items. And I'm sorry, I didn't get them on the docket for this evening. The reservoir ab area near Route 10, I know the state is proceeding with construction over there. But the, the grass and the weeds around that area are really overgrown. And I think it was city land. And we had building inspection go off of that. I think we could cite them for what the, the condition is over there. So I don't know if you have a contact at the DOT that can go over there and, you know, at least mow the grass and the weeds over there. It really looks unsightly. And I, I know it's a construction zone. But I, I think they can still take care of that while, while doing the ongoing construction. Also, on, in conjunction with the reservoir ab construction, I had a constituent on Willis Street call me. That's that short street right next to Midas. And I guess their state... That's that short street right next to Midas, and I guess they're staging vehicles there in the, in the parking lot, and it is really making a lot of noise. He said at 10:30 at night, vehicles are there getting ready, either parking or going out to, to do work, and I don't know, I don't know if that's the state or if that's Providence Water doing the, the street lining, but I just want to make you aware of that as well in case you have contacts, and maybe they could move to a, a different area, that maybe even somewhere around Niantic Ave that's a little more industrial, and it's only a short drive over to, to bring the construction vehicles over, so I'm wondering if they could do that. Also, to Mr. Mason, I'm just going to ask again, I pretty much asked this every meeting, the Rolf Square construction, or the repairs to the sidewalks and, not the sidewalk, the crosswalks, replacing the bricks. I don't know, do you have a status on that yet, or is it still, still ongoing?
We're still in the process of repairing storm drains. We only have one nation in the city, and that is on the list that we actually have got to be brick on my desk right now, so we know what to look for.
Okay.
We need to get it.
Okay. And also, you, you mentioned Garden Street, and that was on my list, too. So you said the engineering study is 99% complete with that as well?
Yes.
And we'll have some sort of course of action once that's done regarding that, because even, even worse than the railroad trestle area, that floods even with a half an inch of rain. And, you know, it really, it goes into their driveways every single time it rains over there, so anything that could be done to alleviate that would be helpful. One other item, Fortson Street, I received a call. Do you know, best you know, was that swept this year? Anyone for you?
The Street-City Sweeping Program has been completed this year. If there are certain areas that need a second sweeping, if you can contact my office, we can, we can set that up.
All right, I'll shoot, I'll shoot you an email. He just called, and I guess Fortson is a hill, and at the bottom of the hill, he said there's an inordinate amount of sand down there. He doesn't know if a sweeper, sweeper came by or not, but if we can revisit it, that would be great to take that out.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And just a couple of items on the positive side. I know the Hope Avenue Ave, the street sign's been replaced, which is great, and also I called in a mattress that was left on an abandoned property, and Public Works went out to pick that up, so thank you very much.
Council Vice President Farina?
Thank you, Council President. This is more of a question for, which Senator Farina to pass to our grant writer. I was at the Cranston West Alumni Event on Friday night. It was a nice event put on by a good organization. I urge all Cranston West graduates to support the Alumni Association. We got discussing the grant that our grant writer received, two, $400,000, to redo Cranston Stadium. The quest, request came through to try to see if we could secure a grant like that for Cranston West Field. As most of us know, the football field is basically unusable, as is the soccer field, because of drainage issues, so they're looking for a grant to try to basically update and fix the football and soccer fields, so students don't have to drive to Hope Highlands or Cranston Stadium. So if we could get the grant writer on that, that'd be great, and see if there's any money we can do to help the students at Cranston West. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, see no hands up? I guess we'll close this part of the agenda. Old business. Is there any old business?
I have none.
Introduction of new business.
We have proposed, proposed ordinance 8-14-1 for renewal of a lease for the Pastore Center for the YMCA, to be referred to Ordinance Committee for hearing on September 11th. Reposed ordinance 8-14-2, an amendment of the budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2014, for fourth quarter transfers, to be referred to finance for hearing on September 11th. We have a 10-year industrial tax incentive application from Candace Science at 2080 Plainfield Pike, to be referred to finance for hearing on September 11th. We have the following claims to be referred to the Claims Committee. Property damage claim of Albert Unsey from alleged incident on May 3, 2014. Property damage claim of Linda Nardillo from alleged incident on June 18th, 2014. Personal injury claim of Dario Castello from alleged incident on June 22nd, 2014. Property damage claim of Ann Lewis from alleged incident on June 22nd, 2014. Personal injury claim of Richard Dodd from alleged incident on June 30th, 2014. A property damage claim from Tara Hepburn from alleged incident on July 10th, 2014. Property damage claim of Joseph Esposito from alleged incident on July 11th, 2014. Property damage claim of William Lenardo from alleged incident on July 14th, 2014. Property damage claim from Catherine Hogan from alleged incident on July 14th, 2014. Property damage claim of Mark Winland from alleged incident on July 28th, 2014. Property damage claim of Robert Hymers from alleged incident on August 4th, 2014. And property damage claimed of Gerard Nedvedek from alleged incident on August 5th, 2014. And property damage claim from Jeffrey Dexter from alleged incident on August 15th, 2014.
Is there a motion to refer all matters as read by the city clerk?
So, second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, take a roll.
Okay.
Councilman Marley?
Yes.
Councilman Stichos?
Yes.
Councilman Barry Blackett?
Yes.
Councilman Sanbria?
Yes.
Councilman Favecchio?
Yes.
Councilman Farina?
Yes.
Miscellaneous business on the city clerk's desk. The Pastore Center is addressed at the beginning of the meeting. Rhode Island State Department of Environmental Management, an application for Northwest Investments, freshwater wetlands alterations on Crest Drive and Valory Court. The city clerks, the city council's next meeting will be Monday, September 22nd. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Motion made, second. No discussion, we are now adjourned.